I had, you know, Nate works till late. Only, only me to get Gavin basketball at six. I, well, I mean, there was still cars. Still cars going under the speed limit the whole way.
I, I should have just put it at six thirty. I, I was trying to like get us in and out, you know, like. But I don't think that that's. Yeah, again, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have six fifteen, so we are back from recess. And just for the record, we do have Councilmember Wegner and City Attorney Tim Sullivan have both joined virtually via Zoom, so.
And then I just want to remind everybody to turn their microphones on if they haven't. Thank you.
All right. And with that, Maggie, we'll just jump right into the special meeting and I'll let you take over.
All right, Mayor and Council. So per Council, the special council meeting on January third, 2022, the Council directed myself and the Mayor to meet with the employee and union rep to discuss and get more information. So we did have that meeting on January fourth, 2022. So per that meeting, the union rep did provide information on a counter offer, so I'll review that at this time. First, I'll ask the Mayor if there's any information he wants to provide about that meeting before I start, but I'll go over, essentially, I'll go over what was, information was provided, and then afterwards, we'll discuss that and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. And I, I don't have anything right now to add, Maggie, so I'll just let you give a brief overview and I'll jump in as, as needed.
All right. As you know, one document that you can reference that I did send you and that you have, that you do have is the union contract that was recently passed. So per that contract, this employee, their wage for 2022 just started at thirty-one seventy-eight per hour. So the request would be to come in at the top of the 2024 salary range at the thirty-four fifty-five. I'll bring that document up in a second. So to repeat, it would be to go from the starting wage that just started on January first.
Say, Maggie?
Yep.
Just because of the barriers here, could you just speak up a little louder?
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. Yep. So again, to repeat that, this employee started their 2020 wage on Jan- January first, per the union contract, at thirty-one seventy-eight. The request is that they would then, they would start, or they would go to the 2024 salary at the top of the range, and that's thirty-four fifty-five per hour. So that would be a two dollar and seventy-seven per hour increase, or eight point seven percent. With that, the, the, uh, the 2024 stipend amount would be considered as well. It would, that stipend amount is five thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars per the union contract. The request is to turn that into an hourly amount. That equals two dollars and sixty-one cents per hour. They are then asking to roll that two dollars and sixty-one cents onto the hourly rage, wage that they're proposing of thirty-four fifty-five to bring it to a final amount of thirty-seven sixteen per hour. So that will essentially eliminate that stipend and bring it into the hourly salary of the employee. And so that would, if you look at it compared to the 2022 wage, it would be a five dollar and thirty-eight dollar increase. But if you're trying to compare apples to apples, if we took the stipend and made it an hourly amount in 2022 and added that to the current salary, it would be thirty-four twenty-four, if that makes sense. So that, the difference between the 2022 hourly amount total and the 2024 that they're requesting is two dollars and ninety-two cents. In addition, the request is to increase PTO from twenty-one days to twenty-six days earned per year. They're currently at twenty-one and they will reach tw- the twenty-six day mark in October of 2022. So they'll become eligible for the twenty-six days within this year. So with that, I know that was kind of a lot of information, a lot of math, but if you have any questions, I am here to answer them. And I do have a spreadsheet up and we can kind of work through it that way as well.
And though, that was presented to us as we met, so I, I guess I will backtrack a little bit. I do want to thank the union rep for meeting with us, you know, and, and with such short notice. But the union rep did present this offer from the employee, you know, based on the employee and that Maggie has presented. So again, I do want to thank the union for their, their timely manner. Now, as we go through this stuff too, just to make sure we keep, just because of the data privacy laws and what we, what we couldn't send out before, a lot, a lot of this information's new. So just out of courtesy to our employee and our residents, feel free to stop anytime, re-get the numbers. We can put the numbers up here. If you need to sit and do some calculations and need a few minutes, speak up and we'll, we'll stop for a couple of minutes while you do some calculations. We know, we want to make sure we get this right and make sure everyone gets what they need. Like I said, out of respect for both the employee and, and our residents. So feel free to jump in anytime. And if it's easier for Maggie to pop a few numbers up there, current versus proposed, we can do that, or if people are jotting it down, but jump in if need be.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. So is that clear? Is it clear to everyone where, what the proposal is? And any questions, clarifications, comments?
I guess my first one is, is, I don't know how it came about besides we were told that we were going to meet about a negotiation, but with negotiating, didn't this like violate the Article Six of the union contract?
And can you do summarize that? I can look it up quick, but.
Or we can have Tim comment on that.
Yeah, I just, if Tim could say it, it doesn't, then.
The union was present during that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
We cannot and did not meet with this individual employee to negotiate anything.
No, the union.
The union is the exclusive representative of employees, so the union was included and involved in any discussions.
Okay.
And the union presented this to us on behalf of the employee? Or the union rep?
And this, this only affects one employee, not the other members of the union?
This particular thing that we're discussing is only pertaining to one employee. Now, there's nothing that stops the other employees from asking something similar.
Okay.
And similarly, there's nothing that would prevent this employee from then going to where he's looking at going to and saying, this is the offer I got, can you beat that?
Does this hap- I'm unfamiliar, does this happen a lot?
No.
Public Works? Okay.
In most cities, you have, no, it's, you guys are a ci- you guys are unique in that you're a fairly small city and that you have a, a bargaining agreement, right? You know, you have four employees and three of the four employees are covered by the, uh, the, the, the contract. So, you know, in the interest of retention, in the past, there has been some individual discussions about trying to keep people around. And so this is not the only time that something like this similar has happened in the city over recent times. But, you know, I mean, I, I, I think it was a good, there's nothing, you know, it was a good idea to try to find out what was happening and see what you can do from an employer, you know, from an employer retention standpoint. I mean, I think the question that you guys need to make is whether or not this is something that you want to do. And what I would advise you to consider when you're doing that is what impact it'll have on the labor relations with the other employees in the bargaining unit. You know, I, I was at the table with Mayor Dodge and Maggie when we were negotiating this contract. And one of the reasons that the city wanted a four or three-year collective bargaining agreement was for predictability for budgeting purposes, you know, of the costing out into the future. And I mean, I, I understand, you know, this employee's got to make whatever decision is best for this employee and his family. So I mean, I think what the city council has to make is whatever decision they think is best for the city.
So now, do we get, say, we would entertain this idea? Is there any guarantees to us? Such as a contract that he is retained to the city for three years, five years, nothing?
No.
No, I mean, that would, that would be very complicated to try to negotiate something like that. Because, you know, anybody can leave whenever they want, you know, you can't hold somebody against their will.
A little more, a little more background from our meeting when we did meet with the employee and the union. The employee, um, the city reached out to the employee for this position, made a job offer. The employee went back to the city and said, no, that's, I, I, I would need this, X, Y, Z. The city said, yep, we will give you X, Y, Z then, and raised their offer. Then out of courtesy came to us to let us know that, that there's an offer on the table. So I, I do, I do appreciate that. I'm sorry, I forgot where I was going with that now.
Yeah. So I, I think.
Sorry, my dogs.
That's all right. So I think Tim is right at this time. That is, that is the information that we received in that meeting with the employee and the union representative. And so now it's, it's up for discussion as to how we want to move forward.
And I, I remember now where I was going with that in the meeting. The, the employee does need to get back to the city, yea or nay, if he's going to accept the position or not, and, and decided to wait until this meeting because we had to post it for three days, but made it clear a couple of times that this was a fi- this wasn't a negotiation. This was, this is what I would need to stay. And we, and we don't have time to continue to meet with the union and have meetings and all that, and, and have them wait. It just, it just doesn't work. I mean, that's just how it, it just doesn't work.
Yeah, so, you know, to Tim's point, we asked for a three-year contract to be able to budget it. And by bringing in that stipend into the hourly salary, that then means we're paying overtime on this stipend amount, correct, Maggie?
That's correct.
So, you know, in the paperwork that you gave us, he's, you know, averaging over a hundred hours of overtime over the course of the next, or the last three years. That's a pretty significant amount. Is our budget, do we even have that as an option?
Uh, can you clarify what you mean by an option? We do budget for overtime. We are a small staff. We do have public works that have to be called in for, we plan for some overtime for snow and other emerg- other emergencies that come up, also ice rink maintenance. We do try and flex schedules as much as possible, but we do budget for overtime. We, at this time, have not planned for a, that much of a stipend, or including the stipend in on the overtime, though, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, that was my question. Thank you. Right, like, I mean, paying the, the stipend is one thing, but that was never included in an overtime rate. So, I mean, I don't know if our budget is even capable to handle this. Have we looked at that?
There's always ways to do budget amendments. So as you know, we've already finalized our 2022 budget. There are ways to do amendments and that would have to be a process that we would have to look at after the fact, like how much this would impact our budget and how we would, what we would do to accommodate the changes.
Do we know what that number is for what the increase would be to our budget with these increases?
I, I don't really know exactly because there's a lot that goes into the budget and there's different areas. So as far as wages, you have to consider things like, you know, and the employee pays taxes, but the city also plays, pays employer taxes. So we'd have to get those numbers. Again, we do, I do put a buffer in anyways for overtime. So it just depends on how much this, how much we're going to increase it. And I just, without knowing exactly what that number will be, I don't have a true budget impact right now. I would say, yes, the data is, is based, or that our budget is based on our 2022 numbers. Again, there's always ways to do budget amendments and, um, and we would have to assess how we would do that budget amendment if we're, if we're considering making this offer. So I would, I would say, just to be safe, I think we've put kind of some of the big numbers together as far as what the increases would be. I have a calculator, we could calculate what that increase would be, like, dollar-wise. Let me just see something.
The stipend on the, it's an eight point four. Are you looking for what the increase?
The increase in dollar amount would be, like, if we went, so let's say, so let's say we did the five dollar and thirty-eight increase. Hold on, I have.
What's the five dollar and thirty-eight?
That's the one where you take, uh, the, you take the wage up to the 2024 for thirty-four fifty-five and then you add the stipend in as an hourly. That brings it up to thirty-seven sixteen.
And you're looking at what that increase is?
Right.
From today?
Yeah, in, in, per year, I guess.
Yeah, I, I would like.
Eight point four percent.
Well, I want a number.
So, um.
Like five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. I think it's.
It's not the one I want.
It is thirty-three.
I think it's twelve thousand one seventy-one sixty.
Say it again.
Twelve thousand one seventy-one sixty?
Well, it's five thirty, you put five fifty-eight?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was like, why is mine off?
Wouldn't you have?
Yep, she's right.
Yeah, I, I don't know why mine's not coming in. Some of these calculators factor in different things. But yeah, it, so, I mean, we can, one, assume that that would be the wage, the wage difference. There's, again, also employer tax contributions that we would have to consider as well, which we.
Thinking.
So I would say, probably, I'm guessing, the, just get, I would say the highest would be, if that's twelve thousand, I would say twenty. Eighteen to twenty would probably be with employer taxes. Exactly. Would be a fair estimate to the budget impact that we would have to work with. Again, it's, 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 it's not that simple. You have to take into considerations what are our budget impacts going to be if this employee leaves as well, you know? And so we just don't have all the, all this in short notice, but.
There's also the fact that the employee has requested an additional week of PTO per year. And that would result in likely increased overtime costs for the other public works employee when he has to cover for that, those vacation times.
I think that's on the high side.
It's very high, but.
We're at the point of, of the, what we contracted for the Culver.
For Cluver?
For the waste service.
Peggy, I, I, I'm, I'm not seeing the twelve thou- is that the, the twelve thousand one hundred seventy-one? That's the increase from today's salary, including stipend, to the proposed salary, including stipend, correct?
Um, and then with overtime.
With overtime. Oh, with overtime.
Yes, with overtime.
Sorry. Thank you.
I got the same figure, so.
If you do it without overtime, it's like eleven thousand two thirty-two?
Yep.
Oh, that's what.
That's what you got.
Yeah.
Of an increase?
No, that can't be right.
Why am I not seeing that? I'm not, I'm seeing it more around.
It's got to be more than that.
Maggie, can you, can you please do it on the Excel spreadsheet or some, or?
Yeah. So.
Go back to Excel at least and pu- put in what his current salary with.
Is he at thirty-one seventy-eight?
Yes.
Well, and we have to add in the two fifty for the stipend. So I get thirty-four twenty-eight an hour. Is that?
Oh, see, I didn't do that because I kept the stipen separate.
Oh, I, I put it in, but.
So if you.
Should be able to just times it by twenty-eighty, right?
Twenty-eighty to figure out full-time, yeah?
Yep.
Yeah. What are you, what's that?
So this is what, the, this is what the increase would be. Without overtime, with the stipend built in.
I don't know where it's coming from, though. I, I'm not s-
It's the, so we're taking the hourly ra- wage that he's currently getting of thirty-one fifty-eight. We're adding five dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour. So based on that, because that's, that is the 2024 wage plus the stipend that he wants added in. So five dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour is the total increase that they're asking for. So based on the five dollars and thirty-eight cents, and that is an increase of eleven thousand one hundred ninety dollars per year. That's based off of a regular two hundred and eighty hours worked.
I don't know what I'm missing.
I mean, twenty-eighty, sorry.
I apologize. I just don't, I don't know what I'm missing.
What are you calculating it off of?
Can you, can you go to the spreadsheet, please? And, but you don't have stipend in there, right?
The stipend is the thirty-seven sixteen.
The stipend's built into the proposed.
And current, and current.
Yep.
No, the current salary does not include the stipend.
Right.
Are we not including stipend or are we including stipend?
So that's why you're not really comparing apples to apples. So you actually.
If you include.
It's different. So you would need to take the eleven thousand minus five thousand.
Yeah.
To get this, to get the difference because you're, we already had, the five thousand is on top of.
So thirty-seven sixteen includes the stipend, so.
Yeah, so it'll be thirty-four twenty-four for current salary.
Okay, so how much is that annually? So go into D, and what is that annually?
Without overtime.
No, no, just, can you please just go to the Excel spreadsheet? Can you just take thirty-four twenty-four times twenty-eighty and put it in D? There we go. So that's his annual salary, right, with stipend?
With the stipend.
And let's do the same there. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, yes. And then to track the two, and that's.
We have a different, yeah. So it's under, yeah.
So it's six thousand dollars difference.
That's why I wasn't sure where the twelve thousand.
And that doesn't include overtime.
Right, right.
But.
But we don't know what overtime is.
We don't know what overtime would be.
But if you'd average it out per, it'd be roughly another five, six thousand dollars. If he works a hundred hours overtime again.
Certainly could, well, the hundred hours was three years' worth, right?
No.
No, that's each year.
Hundred a year, okay.
It's about a hundred and sixteen average a year.
Well, I understand Peggy wants to get it from a budgeting standpoint, I'm just trying to go dollar, I mean, apples to apples, we're comparing without overtime, just base salaries to base salary.
And we already have, and you have to understand, we also already have a hundred hours of of overtime scheduled for him at his current salary of thirty-one seventy-eight.
Right, right.
So the, the hour, the overtime would actually only be it'd be a lesser amount than.
Right, I see what you're saying, yep.
So you're probably, you're close to eight to ten thousand addition, increase, if that, if you were going to make an assumption on overtime.
So Mayor Dodge, when we talked at the last meeting, you talked about why we had created the stipend, that it was a special project for the lead, right, can be reviewed, all of that. If we make that part of the hourly wage, does that then mean the job description is amended and this is always a part of that position?
That is correct, so and I was, you know, I was going to wait till a little bit till we had some motions and an open discussion on this, but I'll, I'll address it now. We purposely created this stipend so it was not in the job description, because we didn't want this operating the plant in the lead position. We wanted to save that to be able to put it into a superintendent position. So if we eliminate this stipend now, it's gone and it's part of this job description in the lead position. And we'll, and we may never be able to get that out of there, so that means whoever's going to run our plant, they just need to be a lead. Unless the union agrees to it, you know, but it could, it could sit there. So that's a big concern of mine, I'm, I'm worried about that, that we don't want that position, that's why we purposely created that to keep it out of there. And now what this will do is put this salary so high for this lead position that anyone going forward, five years, ten years, fifteen years from now, it's in there and that'll always be the range, which I, I think is too high for that lead position.
Can't we just change his position title to superintendent?
Well, we talked about that Monday also, and that then gets into the position of, because we're so short-staffed, and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, we're so short-staffed, or not short-staffed, we're so lean with only two people, that if we move him to a supervisory position, I'm assuming we may have to hire another person in there, and now does that mean the supervisor cannot take work away from the union people? And take their work from them, and so now we don't have enough hours in the day for a supervisor, you know, he only works in the plant a couple hours a day, then what would, you know, so that, that's, we strategically set it up like this with the union three years ago. That we didn't want to, we didn't want to take any work from the, from the union, the collective bargaining unit.
Yeah, there's just not enough supervisory work within the department that, that position would still be performing regular, we still would need that position to be out plowing roads and to be out doing that, you know, bargaining unit work, so on the one hand, to have it supervise, to create a position that's not within the bargaining unit, it has to be supervisory, and I just don't know that there's enough work as the, with the size of the current city to justify that.
Right, and, and right now, obviously, there's no concern Brian would file a grievance, but we got to look, we got to look further than that in the future, than in the future, in three years from now, five years from now, we might have a three, four, or five people, ten years from now, you know, so it's looking at the future. So that's, that's a big piece of this.
So in your discussions, the thirty-seven sixteen, if that's not the hourly wage, this employee may not take the offer? Or could you take the stipend out? But in, increase the stipend from five thousand to what we think the overtime they would? My guess is the reason they want it in their hourly is it pushes their overtime rate possibly higher.
So we didn't negotiate when we were there, we didn't negotiate, they just proposed this to us, and like I said, the employee indicated, I specifically asked three times that, nope, this is, this is what I need or, or not, that I don't, it doesn't have time for negotiation.
No, I understand.
But.
So I'm just saying, if we don't approve thirty-seven sixteen, but he could, like, we could say it's thirty-four twenty-five an hour, and then we're going to do seventy-five hundred dollars, that's twenty-five hundred dollars, which is what we would think average would be, your overtime.
But to your point.
But we don't, he could say no and.
To your point, I'm thinking the exact same thing you're thinking. And we'll see what happens here with this. I still might propose taking one last stab at something and throwing it out there, but we'll have to see, I mean, then we have to go through the union again, and the union's got to meet with him, and then he's got to get back to us, you know, so it starts getting messy.
Because he'd still retain.
We don't even know for sure if we offer him this, that he's going to say yes and stay.
Well, we, he, he's indicated that, but we don't know. I, I have no reason to believe he, he would not, from our conversations, Maggie, would you, I, I I think he would.
You're right, there's always a possibility that.
But to Peggy's point, he did, he did ask Tonka Bay for a cer, or, or the city for a certain amount. And they agreed to it, and he hasn't accepted yet, as far as I know.
I agree with Nikki, because that still brings him to his thirty-seven sixteen, retains what Mike was talking about.
So would you have to then bring this back to the union and then they present it to him?
Yep.
Is that how it works?
Yeah, so we would notify the union and then they would just let it, the union would essentially bring the information and then based on that, it would be.
And they would still do it, even if we approved the thirty-seven sixteen, they would still bring it to him?
Right.
And say, okay, they agreed with this, so no matter what decision we make technically, it's the same process?
It's the same process, the, the union has indicated, obviously, they're going to work with that on this, this is one of their members of the CBU, they're going to make it easy as possible on that, you know, without any roadblocks by any means, so it's, it's, it's not like it takes hours and hours and hours to do some of this, it's a matter of a couple of phone calls. Maybe our minutes to show, yeah, yes, this is truly our offer before we can get something down, you know, that Tim can write something up or whoever needs to, to actually give this, you know, let him know, but in good faith, everyone will work in good faith.
Yeah.
And the unions indicated that, and I'm certain we, we would do the same, so.
I was just trying to get a little creative because I agree that it would be really hard to, it would really not work well in the future when our public works department does grow, that we're
Yeah.
tapped so high, but this still gets, I think, the end result.
Right, where it needs to be.
Where it needs to be. And, and my biggest concern is just, there aren't a lot of good, and, and, we don't know, because we haven't put a job offer out or anything like that, but to, to find somebody to run both plants, it's going to cost us contracted money plus hiring another person, so.
So can we make a motion?
Well, we have, we're, we're here to discuss the, the offer that the unions present on behalf on that, so yes, I'll look for, if there's no further questions, comments on, on the.
Well, the thirty-four twenty-four is, is no stipend is included in that, right?
Correct.
What thirty-four twenty-four?
On C?
That says twenty.
That is the stipend.
Yep.
That is no stipend.
That's no stipend, that's the twenty twenty-four hourly rate.
Five thousand one hundred and sixteen eighty raise money per year, right? Okay. So what, what are we motioning now?
C was the current rate with the hourly rate for the stipend added in.
It is, it should be thirty-four twenty-eight, but it is, yes.
I thought that was just the, the union salary range that he wanted.
Yeah, so the thirty-four twenty-four is the top twenty twenty-four salary per hour. I'm sorry, that should be twenty-four, I apologize.
Thirty-four fifty-five.
Thirty-four fifty-five.
Oh, but that's, yeah, no.
That's not what we calculated on that spreadsheet, though.
No, it was supposed row one, current salary, B is his current sal, hourly salary.
Right.
C.
Oh, C is the.
Is with the stipend is thirty-four twenty-eight. That's what the stipend included, that's the hourly wage.
Thirty-four twenty-eight, that's, that is the stipend today.
Yep, that's today, that's current salary, and proposed is the thirty-seven sixteen.
So this should really be right here.
And that includes everything, yep, that includes the stipend and the salary. Does that make sense, Larry?
Yeah.
You did W instead of two.
Oh, my gosh. All right, so that should be.
Okay, so it's under six thousand. Could we just do like what a quick? What is, what would overtime be at both of those, like at a hundred and sixteen hours, like, does that make sense? Just to see like if, if we change the stipend so that we don't run into the issues.
If we did a hundred?
Yeah.
Well, we shouldn't calculate overtime on that rate, though, we should calculate it on the thirty-one seventy-eight.
Correct.
Right. Yep.
On his cur, on the.
Yeah, because that's the, he doesn't get overtime on the stipend.
Right.
So you.
One point five.
Time, yeah, time.
You're right.
No, one point five.
Oh, my gosh.
It's like forty-seven sixty-seven at a hundred hours, four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven.
So that's what we've already accounted for. So then what would.
Conservative estimate
Right.
of overtime that he will earn this year.
So that's current, current overtime forty-seven sixty-seven.
Twenty-eight hundred bucks.
So overtime diff's eight hundred and seven.
Yeah. So if.
How did we get C again, Maggie? You didn't times that by two hundred and eighty, did you? You just put the five thousand on it.
No, so we're trying to do apples to apples, so the current salary is thirty-one seventy-eight. If you add, if you take the current stipend, which is five thousand one hundred twenty-five,
Yeah.
and you divide that into twenty, by two thousand and eighty, that gets the hourly amount for that stipend currently in twenty twenty-two. So if you add the current salary, hourly salary, plus that hourly stipend amount, that's where you get the thirty-four twenty-four, because we want to compare it to the.
Just add the stipend to the, the hourly rate, or you take this, you take the thirty-one seventy-eight, times that by twenty eighty, and then just add that stipend, don't you?
Yeah, but we're trying to compare what the, to the proposal that they want.
We want to bring it hourly, so compare it to his proposed, which is, he wants to transfer it to hourly. So that's how, that's why we did that calculation to make.
Right now, it was apples to oranges, and now it's apples to apples.
Yes.
But if we really want to know the net difference, we need to take the current salary of thirty-one seventy-eight times twenty eighty and then add a hundred hours of overtime, and then add five thousand dollars stipend. And then you can take that minus the thirty-seven sixteen times twenty eighty times another hundred hours at one and a half, and that's going to give us our difference.
Okay, so let's, let's do that.
Which is still roughly.
Right.
So this is current. So, okay, so with overtime, this would be what he currently is at. So this is current, this is with the stipend, this is with overtime.
And then if you take the thirty-seven sixteen times twenty eighty.
By what?
So now we're just doing the other one, which you already have up there, so then you'd want, now you got to do the overtime. That plus the.
That plus fifty-five seventy-four.
Yep. And then what's the difference between those two? Yeah, which is what we've, is pretty much the calculation that is.
Pretty close.
Yeah. So if you were to like do what, not, to still have the stipend but still benefit from the overtime, but it would, you would just get a bigger stipend to compensate the difference, you'd be the, it's what, fifty-one, what's the stipend right now, fifty-one?
Uh, fifty-one twenty-five.
Right, plus eight oh seven around that, that would then accommodate the overtime that he would not get in the hourly wage. Does that make sense?
So then you would pay him thirty-four twenty-four plus the stipend?
Right, and then, then, then you don't have to worry about the lead role having those job responsibilities, and that in the future, if we do hire a supervisor, we're still in the same situation we're in today.
And he's going to end up.
And he, and he will still have the same wage that he would have if we, they rolled it all into the hourly range, the only difference is if he happens to not what we agree on, the overtime of a hundred hours is the average of the last three years, I think that's a fair
Right.
um, number that I would feel comfortable with. That kind of eliminates the problem, I just would hope that if we presented it that way, that this calculation would just be shown why, or no.
We can talk about that, let's not, first, we got to discuss what he proposed to us, what we're going to do with that.
Oh, okay.
We're going to have to bring that, and if anyone else has any questions on it, we can get them, and otherwise, we'll look for more and at least resolve that, and then we can talk what, if there's other options, if we want to try to do something, but
Okay.
we have that on the table, the offer that was presented to us from the union on behalf of the employee.
Okay.
So any other clarifications, anyone need anything more on that? If that, I'll, I'll look for a motion to accept or reject the employee's offer.
I make a motion to reject the employee's offer.
We have a motion on the table to reject the employee's offer, do we have a second?
I will second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, Mike, if we if this motion passes, then we can entertain another motion to
Counteroffer.
make a different offer. Is that correct?
Correct.
Based on what the employee said, no, but, utter, again, respect to the employee, what's right for our community, what we need to do, I think it's worth having that discussion, absolutely. I'll, yeah, I, I would allow that. It's shaky ground, we're going to have to move swift, we're going to have to get something settled, and if, if that's the thing, but I, I will entertain that absolutely.
I think for the future of the community, keeping the stipend separate is in the best interest. You know, Nikki, I was right there with you thinking through that, so. As long as we're okay to make some other, you know, proposal. As long as we're okay to make some other, you know, proposal. I'm comfortable.
We'll have that option. I'm not, don't, I can't guarantee anyone will.
Yeah.
That's where I'm hung up too, is if we do this like you had said, Mike. It, it hangs us for the future. And that, that's the only reason I'm against it.
But I think it also, like, we had a plan in place with that supervisory role. And when we grow, you know, this employee also can have availability to that, and it will just make things more cohesive in. And not mess everything up that we've strived so hard to work on, to get to this point, but showing that we do. Find this employee very valuable to the community, and, and a huge asset.
Yep, and I agree with that, and, and I, I think we all do, and, and like I said earlier, I. I'm gonna vote to accept this rejection just for the fact of future, I, I just don't wanna change those, those ranges, I don't wanna change that, and for those reasons, I just can't. And, and quite honestly, it's the same for overtime, I won't entertain any, you know, for, for this year to not have five more days, I think we're plenty good at twenty-one, and. Starting January, this person's gonna move up anyways, so I don't wanna go in and start changing that also for future employ, you know, cuz that'll change that range, what is. It's, you know, one to five, five to ten, and whatever he'll be landing into next, I don't wanna start changing that either, so I, I won't be entertaining that also, but. That's, Larry, anything to comment on?
No, I'm, I'm with everybody, I, I value the employees, what he brings to the city and his skills. We do have an agreement with the union that represent the employees, it's a, it's a dangerous precedence that we set. But the stipend should be separate, I know you guys, the, the council that, and the mayor that has been on for years. You guys have talked about a supervisor, you guys have talked about a superintendent, and now you have a lead, but we're just not there yet, you spent a lot of hours on it. And, you know, I think with collective bargaining, that, that, that all employees should be in, in it, at the same time. And I think this last agreement's a fair agreement, so. It takes time, but the, these guys have gotten some pretty decent money the last few years as well, so I'd, I'd like to see us stay with the agreement.
Any other comments? So we have a motion and a second to reject the offer, uh, the counteroffer from the, uh, union and employee. All in favor, say aye.
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 All the same sign? Motion carries five zero. Alright, with that, um, to Peggy, to anyone else, uh, to, to your question, Peggy, for everyone, if there's any other motions or discussions anyone would like to have. Typically, we wouldn't get into this, but I, I do think it's certainly fair.
Well, I think we should at least counteroffer and try and get him there, maintaining the stipend. And, uh, motion for thirty-four twenty-four an hour with a stipend of sixty-eight seventy-two forty.
What was the stipend?
You're making that motion?
Yeah.
I would like to talk about that before you just do that.
Well, we have a motion on the table, do we have a, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion dies for the lack of a second. So my thoughts on that, my thoughts just right away, I, I. And I'll just throw it out there now, um, and then, and then we can have the discussion from there. I have certainly no problem adding five thousand dollars onto the stipend. To capture, to capture some of that, I don't wanna entertain any overtime, I think that's fair, it doesn't quite get him where he, according to my math. His proposed, the proposed was a eight point four percent increase overall. With this stipend at another five thousand dollars added into it, it gets him at six point nine percent. Now, the overtime's not there and all that, I understand that part, but I, for me, I would be plenty fine with that, I think that's a fair, um, offering.
So you're saying keep his current salary?
Yeah, keep it at thirty-four twenty-four.
And then just add the stipends ten thousand instead of five.
The stipend would then come to. Ten thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. And then that would continue on getting the increases every year also.
The percentages.
Yep, the percentages, like, yep, so, so there's, uh, an increase there too on the hour, you know, on, as that increase.
And, I'm sorry, Mike, did you say salary stays at thirty-one seventy-eight, or we would go to the thirty-four fifty-five?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yep, salary is at thirty-one seventy-eight, I'm sorry, yes, keeping the current salary as a contract. I think that's.
Mayor Dodge's proposal is essentially to offer him five thousand new dollars to stay, and that money would be placed onto the stipend.
It would be increasing the stipend to, by five thousand dollars.
It is not a small offer, I will just, you know, refer everybody there, like, that's a, if your boss said, I'll give you five thousand more dollars, I mean, he, you know, that's, that's, that's a strong offer. Now, Will, is it something that he'll take? He's indicated it is not, but you guys, you know, you know, your explanation for it, Mike, makes sense.
Yeah, and, and like I've, like I said on Monday, typically, that's not my philosophy to, to engage in a lot of this counteroffer, I, I just, I just don't. That's just my philosophies, but like I said, I, I, we're still up here to do what's best for the community and the residents, and, and our employees, and I think, and I think we've done that. With that, it's just my opinion, we can have our discussion. I, we can make a motion, it's, I'll leave it open, I'll, I'll, I'll leave the table, the floor open.
Well, I was just trying to get to. Closer to his offer, but just doing it so that we had the stipend separate. So my initial thoughts was to move him to the thirty-four twenty-four, the top of his pay scale. Which would be a six thousand dollar increase, so that's a thousand dollars over what Mike was saying. And then the, the stipend wouldn't go out to ten, it would be like six thousand or five thousand nine hundred and something dollars. That average overtime.
Now, just to clarify, the proposed salary, he was asked was thirty-four fifty-five. Base salary, and what, what they did is they took the top salary in the contract from the twenty, year twenty twenty-four.
Oh, okay.
So again, we'll have to change that whole con, I mean, we're changing all our ranges again on everything, then for that position.
Yep, see, and I would be willing to even offer a little bit more in the stipend to get closer to his number. And keeping our hourly range, again, we're, we're setting ourselves up for, for future use, and we wanna be able to take this. You know, at some point, take the responsibilities of the plant out. So if we can increase that, I mean, I would even, right, we have the sixty-eight seventy-two up there, I would take the stipend to, you know. Twelve thousand.
Okay.
You know, give him an extra two thousand there, but keep his hourly rate at thirty-one seventy-eight.
Then you're not messing with that, that range, and it does account for the overtime he would've received if it was his hourly wage that he wants.
Right, and if he only works fifty hours of overtime, he got a heck of a deal. I mean, right, that stipend comes regardless of overtime or not.
Yeah, for me, that's too much.
I think what the attorney said, Peggy, was, what, I mean, that five thousand dollars is a generous offer, you know, a pretty nice bonus. I wish a boss would come up to me one day and say, hey, we value you. How about a five thousand dollar kick?
I think there's a lot of benefits to working here versus other place also, and if we've gotten real close, that could be.
Now, would your five thousand dollars include the extra five days of vacation?
For me, I'm, I'm not interested in, in that, cuz I change it, then, then that's gotta change, we gotta go in the union contract and change that for every employee going forward.
I think what the mayor's proposal is, is like, it, it doesn't mess really with, with the proposal that was approved in August this year. Cuz the stipend is kinda unique with the employee that is, receives it.
Yep.
With the, with the plant, the water plant, and the training that he's gone through, that, uh, the city did provide and pay for. And it shows that, hey, we do appreciate you, it's, it's a, it's, I think it's a nice offer, and it doesn't mess with the, the whole agreement between the city and the union.
And Larry, you, you nailed exactly what I'm trying to do, is stay away from messing with that contract at all for the future, for the future things, I don't wanna start changing that.
Yep.
Peggy's comment on going up and adding, going to twelve thousand at a seven thousand dollar increase, that actually takes it, according to my math, a nine point seven percent increase.
And what was his?
Yeah. I'm comfortable with five, I think that's fair, I think that's a nice. It, it, it's more than a fifty-fifty meeting, I mean, it's, it's a eighty percent to twenty, you know, a little give on there, you know, and, and. Again, we just, I don't know where this employee stands on how, how much they wanna move or not, but. He did indicate, he's certainly very happy here and likes working the community and. And then it's just a simple, uh, MOU, I believe, uh, just working with the union to, uh, change that stipend. Amount and, and just change that up and, and have it, uh, increase with the, with the yearly increase.
So can, with, cuz you're a percentage person, so it's, your percentage is what, six point nine?
Correct.
And then what was his request, if we were to, what was that?
This is no overtime, this is base.
No, that's fine.
Eight point four.
Six point nine? Okay.
And I'm not adding, uh, for me personally, I'm not looking to exactly match, I do think we have, you know. A good, clean work environment, uh, brand new equipment, everything's brand new that we're working with, um, I, I, I think we have a lot of flexibility, he works well with our community, our community works well with him. Works well with staff, our staff works, there's not inner problem, I mean, things, it's, there's, there's some good advantages to being here and.
I was just thinking, you know, you know, and I know the five thousand, I just feel like I wanna be a little, I wanted to be a little bit closer to what he, he wanted, since we are changing it. So I would be, you know, instead of five, it'd be six thousand for this additional stipend, is kind of what I was thinking.
So an eleven thousand dollar.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And that's kind of like in the middle of where.
Right.
Peggy was sitting, so you're not paying more, but you're just, it's, it's a little bit, it's not the nine percent, it's about the percentage change that he had requested. So, I mean, I'll make a motion.
Rounded it up to eleven, eleven even.
Yeah.
Eleven even, instead of ten, ten one twenty-five?
What?
Instead of ten one twenty-five.
Yeah, just do, do eleven. I'll make a motion to. Keep his current salary of thirty-one seventy-eight. And to increase the stipend from five thousand one twenty-five to eleven thousand dollars.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
Mike, do you by chance just have that percentage?
Well, six percent, or eleven one twenty-five was eight point three one.
And I do just wanna bring it to your attention that per the contract. We have a couple of options on how to do this if he accepts it, but if you bring the twenty twenty-two stipend up to eleven thousand dollars, okay? In twenty twenty-three, that goes up by two point seven five percent, and in twenty twenty-four, that goes up by three percent. So, I mean, that's, that, I mean, it only goes up, you know, a hundred and twenty-five bucks on five, but I mean, that, that's a big number, just making sure the council's aware of that.
Yep, and that's just what I was gonna comment on also, and that's where I'm struggling with this, I, I'm more comfortable with the five. You know, but that, hold on, I, I need one second to do math here.
Cuz that'd be another three hundred bucks in the first year, and then. The second year, it'd be another, another three hundred and fifty bucks, so that stipend would be eleven thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars a year at the twenty twenty-four contract.
Correct.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Alright, we have a motion. And a second, any further discussion? I think it's a little too high, I, you know, with the raises in there, I, it's a little more than I wanted to, to be at. I'm at the five, we're talking eleven, in reality, today, for this year, that's eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Do I get hung up on eight hundred and seventy-five dollars? I, I think I absolutely should. It's eight hundred and seventy-five dollar residence money, but.
Well, we have to vote, so.
Yep.
It's eleven thousand, not eleven one twenty-five, right?
Correct.
I just, I need a second for math.
I got a question, say, say that this, this was approved, and then. A year and a half down the road, um, we're faced out of vacancy, can we reduce the stipend on this? When we're looking for a new employee, or?
We have the ability to take the stipend away at any time.
Okay.
It's, it's a, it's a.
It's a sign.
It's a special assign, yeah, it's a special assignment, so we could hire someone in, in the lead position and not want.
They might not have the certification.
We can pull that special assignment, not offer it.
Okay.
Again, and that's strategically, we did that to move that into our superintendent position when we're ready.
So if a vacancy came up and then, and we needed somebody with a, like, just a minimum wastewater license, not the A, maybe a B. And they were gonna run the plant, we, we could like offer less of a stipend?
They can't run the plant if they have a license, they have to have an A.
License to running.
Okay.
Independently, like, without somebody supervising you.
And that's, that's correct, right, Tim, that in the future, if we did bring in a lead. You know, three years from now to run the plant, does that, we could renegotiate that stipend amount, correct?
I, I mean, everything is negotiable, and it's like, I would probably, the way I would, the way I would draft this memorandum of understanding is that this change would be. Unique to this employee, not changing the CBA.
Oh, I like, okay, I think that covers that then.
Okay.
And then, of course, when we get to the next negotiation session, you know, we'll have to recognize that the MOU, you know, that he's making this much on the stipend. But that's the end of twenty twenty-four, you know?
Right. One second, please.
Cuz I mean, what did you pay Kluber per year to do that?
Twenty-one nine.
Yeah.
Plus per diem.
This gets him pretty close to where he wants to be.
With increases.
With increase.
Yes. Cuz there's no heat. Are you, my hands are cold.
I'm sorry, I'd still need one minute, I'm, I apologize.
It's important for you to know your numbers.
It's important for you to know your numbers.
Let me just double-check this, Maggie. Proposed salary was 3455 from 3128 to 3455. What's the difference of that from an hourly wage?
From the current?
Yeah, proposed to current, 3455 minus 3178. $2.77 an hour. Right?
Yep.
And then if we take a stipend up to 11,000, which is an increase of 11,000 minus 5125, that's 5,875. Divided by 2080, that comes to 282 an hour. Am I right? Does that make sense? So the stipend today is 5125. Going to 11. That's 5,875. And if you just take that over annually, over 2080, divided by 2080, it's $2.82 an hour.
More than what he was asking for.
We're offering more than what he's even asked for?
It doesn't make sense.
Now, I understand the vacation, I mean, I, I get that part, but I'm, in my mind, I'm not, that's not hourly wage, that's just nice to have, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I think, yeah. By bumping it to, like, even, even at the 10125, it's more than what he was asking for per hour. If you're at 282 versus 277 an hour.
Right, but you're including some for the overtime that he's not gonna get for the hourly increase.
Correct. That's the one reason why you would want your stipend to be part of your hourly, is because then it accounts for your overtime. So that's kind of where I was going in, meeting in the middle.
Right.
Yep.
I don't know if we ever had any intention of stipend collecting overtime. I, I just don't.
I'm just trying to get close to his offer with, and all I'm doing is trying to get close to an offer that still allows him to want to stay, and he's worth it.
Yep, and be in the lead.
And be in the lead position with not screwing that up. It's not changing his hourly wage so that, yes, next year, he'll make more, and his stipend will be more, but that's enticing for him to stay.
Yeah, see, and I'm more of, let's try to meet somewhere and have him put a little skin in the game also, to stay.
Well, I don't think there's a lot of skin.
I don't know.
I think if he's got an offer that is still more than what this is, he's gonna take that.
Any further discussion? Anyone else need any time for anything?
So, if I look at this right, if we took the prorated rate at 3718 times 2080, it was 77334. We averaged in, I did 116 hours of overtime, which was another 6469, gave an annual salary of 83,803. So if we come back to the 2022 hourly rate of 3178 times 2080 is 66,102. 116 hours of overtime is 5529, is a salary of 71,632. And you take that, plus the 11,000 for the stipend, we come out at 82,63212. And from his proposal and the estimates that I mentioned above, we're shy 1,171.60. So there is, you know, to Mike's point, still some skin in the game on his part, assuming those assumptions of overtime. So we're not, while the hourly wage may seem to be more on that stipended amount, when you calculate an overtime, and then, you know, consider we're not touching the the vacation request of five days, I do think our offer is less than what he asked for.
Peggy, you at the, using the 11,000 or the 1015?
11.
11,000. Any other?
What was the percentage, Mike, at 11,000?
8.31.
Yeah, well, it's 6,000 more, so another 11125, it was 8.31. So, I mean, it might come down to 8.28 or something, you know, for a hundred dollars in there.
And the 5,000 was 6.9?
6.9, correct. That's according to my math.
Well, I was really comfortable with that.
Me too. And as, like I said, for 875 to be able to retain this employee, I, I think that's probably right for our community at this point. It, it seems we're continually doing these things and creating positions and doing things, you know, every year, it seems, but I think it is still the right thing to do. It's a little more than I would have liked. He is a great employee. I would probably bet a paycheck, we won't, wouldn't get someone better, but, you know, they're, you know, you could still find equal, or, you know. But, so for that reason, I, I can get on board with it, certainly, I, I think it's worth it. And again, we don't know yet what's gonna happen, we're gonna have to move swift, we're gonna have to, Maggie, you're gonna have to get together with Tim, get ahold of the union, let them know our proposals, so they can get ahold of the, the union member, or, yeah, the member. You'll have to get ahold of our union rep, so they can get ahold of the union member and propose it, but I think we can do that fairly quick. You know, I'm certain the person's watching the meeting or, or has already, or, or will have watched it by then and know what's going on, so I, I'm pretty sure, but. All right, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to propose to the employee to increase the stipend up to 11,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign? Motion carries five zero. Anything else, Maggie, you need for that? Tim, anything else you need to comment on before we adjourn?
No, I just, you know what I mean, this is, you know, make sure that we communicate this to the 49ers, not to the employee.
Right.
And, you know, well, if it's something that they can agree with, me and the union rep will write it up.
Great, thank you, Tim, I appreciate your time.
Yeah?
With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign? Motion carries five zero, thank you, everyone.